And are we, and video is rolling?
Video is rolling.
Whoo, we're good then. All right, well, good morning. Thank you for coming this morning, eight thirty in the morning. And I'm Eric Fritsch. I am Chair of the Campus Carry Task Force. I am also Professor and Chair of the Department of Criminal Justice here at UNT. And today, we're going to talk about the campus carry legislation and go through a little PowerPoint and then open it up for questions, comments from y'all. But before we start, I want to introduce the Task Force members that are here. It's a 23-member Task Force, and part of them come to each of the Town Hall meetings. So we have Ed Reynolds, Chief of Police, here. We have Elizabeth With from Student Affairs. We have Brad Scott from Risk Management. We have Mo McGinnis, Dean of Students. And we have Darlene Callahan from Space Management. And anybody else? I forgot. Margarita, yeah, she stepped out. Oh, there's Margarita. Margarita Vanegas from URCM. So, okay. So kind of just before we start, just to kind of give you an overview of the presentation and what we're going to do, but also what our task is. We're a 23-member Task Force comprised of really a cross-section of the campus community. We have representatives from the Student Government Association. We have representatives from the Graduate Student Council. We have Representative Don Nasca from the Staff Senate. We have representative from the Faculty Senate. And then we have people on the academic side. We have myself. And then we also have Finley Graves, who is the Provost. And then we have a whole host of people that will be impacted by the campus carry legislation on campus. So several administrators on campus from the ones that I've introduced, Dean of Students, Student Affairs, Risk Management, Space Management, UNT PD, Housing, et cetera. Officer General Counsel is on the committee on the Task Force as well. So our job and our responsibility is to draft a policy on campus carry that will then go to the President in December. The President will then take that information and that draft policy, and then we'll move it to the Board of Regents. The Board of Regents will review it, make any amendments to it. Any amendments they make are final. Then we will have our campus carry policy in February 2016. The law takes effect August 1, 2016. So between February 2016 and August 1, 2016, we'll do training, educational programs, et cetera, to roll out the campus carry policy on campus. So what are we here today to do? First, to do a presentation. Just going to go through and give you some information that we, as the committee, think is important for everybody to understand. First is what are the requirements of the campus, what we call campus carry legislation? Second thing is some information on concealed handgun license holders, because that's who this law specifically applies to. Also, some data that we have from the Texas Department of Public Safety on concealed handgun license holders, and then the expected impact on UNT. My plan is I'll run through the presentation, and then I'll just, we'll just open it up for questions, answers, discussion, et cetera. Any questions that I'm not in the best position to answer, we have other Task Force members that may be more appropriate to answer those questions. So first things first, what are the requirements of campus carry? I'll just kind of give you a short history of it. It is that the legislature, Texas Legislature, had looked at campus carry for several legislative sessions. It was finally passed, this past legislative session, signed off by Governor Abbott. And it takes effect, so it becomes effective on August 1 of 2016. And so that's kind of the timeline I laid out for you already. It becomes effective on August 1, 2016. And basically, what it allows is fairly direct. What it allows is it allows concealed handgun license holders, so what we just call CHL holders, to carry a concealed handgun on or about their person on campus, again, beginning August 1 of 2016. Just a point of differentiation, we have it in a later slide as well, but what we are talking about today is campus carry. So concealed handgun license holders carrying a concealed handgun on campus. We are not talking about open carry. Open carry is becoming law in the state of Texas, January 1, 2016. That is where CHL holders will be able to expose their handgun, so kind of like a police officer in a holster on their side. That's called open carry. That is becoming law, January 1, 2016. It will not happen on the UNT campus. Institutions of higher education are explicitly excluded by law from open carry. So all we'll have on campus is campus carry, and we'll make sure that is clear. Also, I put it in bold there, but UNT is going to abide by the requirements of the law. That's our charge from the President, is to make sure that what we pass, what we offer as our draft policy fits with the intent of the law. And we'll talk about that as we move along a little bit. Redundancy is an okay thing in some respects, from my standpoint, and so that first bullet point, we've already covered. But again, I've been talking to a lot of people, and unfortunately, there's a lot of misinformation about what is going on with campus carry. And what we're talking about, again, is once it's effective, August 1 of 2016, this law specifically applies to concealed handgun license holders. So CHL holders in the state of Texas will be able to carry a concealed handgun, again, not open carry, concealed handgun, on or about their person while on campus. What the law also allows us to do is it allows UNT and every other institution of higher education in the state of Texas to carve out what we, just so we have a common language of what we're talking about, the law doesn't call them this, but allows us to carve out what are called gun-free zones. So we have the ability, and we want to hear from y'all after the presentation, of where you think those gun-free zones should be. So these will be areas that are strategically decided upon and which CHL holders cannot carry on campus. Okay? So we have the ability to carve out what are called gun-free zones. We are required by law, if we carve out gun-free zones, to give effective notice to the concealed handgun license holder, probably like you've seen at some restaurants and bars, the signs on the door. We will have to do that throughout campus, whether it's a building that has been deemed to be gun-free or a portion of a building that has been deemed to be gun-free. We will have to provide effective notice. And I put in there such as collegiate sporting events. And the only reason why I put that in there is because right now concealed handgun license holders cannot carry their guns at collegiate sporting events. So it's already not allowed by law. So that's why I put that one in there. So we're allowed to carve out these gun-free zones in consultation with our university community, but the law also specifically states that the gun-free zones, they don't use that term, but the gun-free zones cannot be so broad that they generally nullify the law, that they generally prohibit concealed handgun license holders from carrying their concealed handgun on campus. So the example I've been using in the presentations is classrooms. We can't say we're not going to allow concealed handguns in classrooms, because that basically nullifies the law, because it doesn't allow students to go to class that are concealed handgun license holders, and it doesn't allow faculty to go to class who happen to be concealed handgun license holders. So they have to be much more limited and much more restrictive and can't be so broad. We're engaging what I refer to as a consultative process. Yes, we're a 23-member Task Force. We have vast representation. I think a cross-section of our university community sits on this Task Force, but we're hosting these Town Halls because we want to get input from a broader, from the broader university community. And so we are hosting a series of Town Halls. This is the second one we've had with staff. We've had one with students. We'll have another one tomorrow with students. We still have two with faculty. And then we also have already had one at Discovery Park. So in the end, we'll have seven Town Hall meetings. And basically, after that consultative process, we also have available to you a website, campuscarry.unt.edu, that not only has information on it, but also has a web form, so you can share your thoughts with the committee, and that goes to the committee. We also have an email address, campuscarry@unt.edu, so you can share your thoughts with the committee. Once all of that is done, we are going to then, as a committee, start working on the drafting of the policy. Okay? We haven't done that as of yet, because we want to hear from you before we begin drafting the policy. And as I said, draft policy is going to President Spatresk in the middle of December's, in the middle of December. The law also allows us to establish rules regarding handguns in campus housing. We have a subcommittee, basically, of the Task Force that is taking that on, looking at how we're going to handle what are probably going to be the few CHL holders that live on campus in campus housing, and we'll discuss that. And you may have questions, and we may need to get other members of the committee up here to answer those questions. Again, redundancy, not a bad thing, but bolded it, wanted to make sure it's perfectly clear that the law for campus carry does not take effect until August 1 of 2016. So we have time to enact our policy and then train and educate our university community about what that policy involves. That's just the effective notice. As I said, any area that is deemed to be gun-free, we have to provide effective notice. So that's what the sign will basically look like. So as I've already mentioned at the beginning and the introduction, is that draft goes to President Spatresk in the middle of December. Then he forwards it on, after any revisions, to the Board of Regents. The Board of Regents is meeting in February 2016. This is on the agenda. Therefore, they will vote on the campus carry policy for UNT and actually for our two sister institutions as well. And they are allowed to make any amendments by law, and any amendments they make are then, are then final. That's why I keep saying we are developing a draft policy, because we're not the final decision-makers on what that policy looks like. Few other requirements that the campus carry law provides in the legislation. We got to basically distribute the policy to students, faculty, and staff. We have to publish it on our website. And then, beginning September 1, 2016, and every two years thereafter, we have to write a report to the Legislature that basically says this, these are our gun-free zones. And for each of our gun-free zones, we have to have the justification for why those were selected. And that's what that last bullet point is getting at. Couple other things that really aren't tied to the law, so it's not a campus carry law requirement, but it's related to it that I think it's important to understand and to at least mention during this presentation, is that, one, UNT cannot revoke the right of a CHL holder to carry on campus. We have no say in that. That is the responsibility of the Texas Department of Public Safety. They are the ones that can suspend and revoke someone's license. We cannot, we have no say in whether or not a CHL holder can carry on campus. Also, once the law becomes effective, there will still be two criminal actions related to CHL holders that the UNT Police Department can get involved in, and that is the display of the handgun. So concealed handgun law, campus carry, applies specifically to concealed handguns. And so if it is in plain view, if it is exposed, if it's brandished, if it's whatever other term you want to call it, it is against the law. UNT PD can take action on that. The second thing is if someone with a concealed handgun license enters a gun-free zone, then that is also against the law, and UNT PD can take action. As I mentioned, open carry is different. Open carry does take effect, January 1, 2016. That's basically carrying a gun in a holster like a police officer does, where you can see it. We will not have that on campus. It's not an option. It is, as it says, specifically excluded in the law. Institutions of higher education will not have open carry. And the last thing is, is that just general information about campus carry is that UNT does not have the legal authority to require a CHL holder to self-identify. So we will not know who these people are. The only people that can ask somebody if they are a CHL holder and require them to self-identify is the Police Department. And so in general, we will not know, on our campus community, who has a CHL and who is carrying a concealed handgun, because we are not, we do not have the legal authority to ask them to self-identify. All right. So that was the first part. Second part, since we're dealing specifically with concealed handgun license holders, I thought it was important for this presentation, we as a Task Force thought it was important to at least run through some of the requirements to be a CHL holder in this state. It's really quite complex. There's a lot of rules. So rolling through three slides doesn't really cover the complexity of it, but it gives you the idea. And I'll tell you kind of the summation of what I take away from what I see in these PowerPoint slides. And so first thing is there's an age requirement. You have to be at least 21 years of age to be eligible, unless you're active military, to be eligible to become a CHL holder. You have to go through classroom training, pass an exam, proficiency exams, you have to discharge your firearm adequately, and all that has to be done by a DPS, Texas Department of Public Safety-certified instructor. Besides that, you have to meet all kinds of other, and again, there's even more, but in two PowerPoint slides will show some of the restrictions that are put on it. Never been convicted of a felony, not been convicted of a Class A or B misdemeanor in the last five years, you're not currently charged with an A or B misdemeanor, or not under indictment for a felony, not under, not a fugitive of justice. So if you know about our criminal penalties in this state, the only thing that's lower than a B misdemeanor is a C misdemeanor, and that's a ticket. It's a finable-only offense. So B and above basically covers all of our criminal offenses in which anybody could be incarcerated in jail or for felonies in prison. That gets a little bit smaller on this one, a little bit smaller font, but not a chemically dependent person, capable of exercising sound judgment with respect to the proper use and storage of a handgun, has not made any material misrepresentation on the application, and DPS does a background investigation. And then there's a website for additional information about eligibility, ineligible requirements. All I do is I go into Google and I type in Texas Department of Public Safety concealed handgun license, and poof, the website shows up. So if you're interested in knowing all the intimate details of what is required for a CHL holder, and also not only to get the license but to keep it, it's all on their website. What I take away from this, and what I've told people in each of these forums, is that basically this, and then the data that I will, I will show in just a minute, but this tells me, as a criminal justice professor at least, that CHL holders are exceedingly law-abiding citizens, because they have to be. And I know there's a fear of guns coming on campus, that that's going to lead to an increase in violence on campus, at least from a CHL holder standpoint. That's extraordinarily unlikely, because these people, one, have to be exceedingly law-abiding to get the license, and they also have to continue to be to maintain the license. We'll talk about some data, so what do we know about them? Well, first, it's about 3% of the Texas population. So about 3% of the Texas population has a concealed handgun license. They are typically over the age of 30. So 86% of them are over the age of 30, 2/3 are over the age of 40. So if most of our students are in their 20s or younger, it'd be 21 to get a concealed handgun license, but if they're in their 20s, they're not likely to have a CHL, according to this data from the Texas Department of Public Safety. And what does it tell us about their criminal activity? The Texas Department of Public Safety, same website I mentioned about eligibility, ineligible factors, same website, has information about the convictions for CHL holders and convictions for, in Texas overall. They keep it on an annual basis. 2013 is the latest available. Usually criminal justice statistics run a couple of years behind. So at least a few weeks ago, when I built this PowerPoint, 2013 was the latest that was available. And what this is basically saying is this, of all of our criminal activity in the state of Texas, there were 51,000 criminal convictions in the state of Texas in 2013. And of those 51,000 criminal convictions, 158 of them were concealed handgun license holders. And so, again, not likely to commit criminal activity, as the term I've used several times, exceedingly law-abiding. And as that says, 1/3 of 1% of the criminal convictions in the state of Texas were committed by CHL holders. Really what people's concerns have been, even before we started these forums and these Town Halls, we knew their concern was about active shooters on campus, and their concern was about violence on campus, and bringing firearms on campus is going to lead to a potential escalation in violence. So I put this slide together. Basically, from a criminal justice standpoint, usually when we talk about violent crime, we usually, although there's a lot of violent crimes, we're usually talking about four violent crimes. We're talking about murder, sexual assault, robbery, and aggravated assault. That's what comes out of the FBI, and so that's what we usually are talking about. And so this slide has those, plus it has terroristic threat. And what it shows, it's the same data as before, comes from the Texas Department of Public Safety, but it's now just the violent offenses in this state. And so the total convictions in 2013, there were 13,764 convictions for violent crimes, I'm sorry, 46, 13,746. So that middle column adds up to 13,746 total convictions for violent offenses. How many of those were CHL holders? 31, 31. So .225%. So not even 1/4 of 1% were CHL holders. Again, very unlikely to commit criminal activity, even less likely to commit a violent offense as CHL holders, very unlikely to commit a violent offense. What do we expect at UNT? Couple of slides on that. Currently, we got about 42,000 people. So 37,000 students roughly, 5,000 employees roughly, 42,000 people overall. We use that 3% standard, so 3% of the population, Texas population is a CHL, we're looking at about 1,260 CHL holders on campus. That would be our rough estimate. Again, they do not have to self- Again, they do not have to self-identify, so we do not know the exact number, but that's our estimate at this time. We do have, we are paying, as I mentioned, particular attention to our residence halls. The law specifically states we can make rules regarding the carrying of concealed handguns in our residence halls. What this is basically saying is that we expect really very few students in our residence halls to be concealed handgun license holders. Why? Well, first, you have to be 21 years of age to be a concealed handgun license holder. That takes out about 5,700 of our, of our students that live in residence halls. We got about 6,200 of them, about 5,700 of them are under 21. So that leaves about 500 of them. As I showed in a previous slide, 86% of CHO holders are 30 years of age or older, 20-year-olds, those in their 20s are unlikely to be CHO holders. So we just don't expect there to be very many CHO holders in our residence halls. We are looking at that. We can answer questions about that. We can talk about what other universities in other states have done regarding residence halls after this presentation, but we are paying particular attention to the residence halls and will have a separate policy regarding how we deal with concealed handguns in residence halls. Campus carries new, but CHL is not. So concealed handgun license was enacted by law in the state of Texas in 1997. So it's been around for almost 20 years where we've allowed people to carry concealed handguns as long as they meet all those eligibility requirements, et cetera. So we asked UNT PD to check to see if they've had any incidents of CHO holders violating the law on campus, basically bringing their handguns onto campus when they're not allowed to, because they're still not allowed to, not until August 1, 2016. And as it says, there's, there's no cases of that. So we don't have any incidences over almost a 20-year period in which a CHO holder has brought a weapon onto campuses and has been arrested by the UNT Police Department. The last thing to talk about before I open it up for questions and, and responses is, is that we're not alone. We're one of eight states that has campus carry. Those are the states listed there. Colorado has the longest history. Colorado was the first. They enacted their campus carry law in 2003. And so we have 12 years of evidence from two large state universities in the state of Colorado, which is on the next slide. So Colorado State University, a university a little bit smaller than ours, but still of a university over 30,000 students. So a very large state university. Over that 12-year period has reported no incidences, no incidents in which a concealed handgun license holder has either displayed or discharged their handgun while on campus. University of Colorado Boulder has had one accidental discharge. It occurred in their dental school. An employee was showing her handgun to a colleague and it accidentally discharged and then she was fired. And so there's two large state universities in a state that's had it for 12 years, and there's been one incident involving a CHO holder either displaying or discharging their firearm. And so again, we're not expecting, you know, the evidence from the data on the CHO holders and then the data from other, other states that have had this, enacted for several years, we're not expecting much of an impact on campus. So you're here today. This demonstrates to me that you have some interest in this topic. And so how do you stay informed? One is the, our campus carry website, so campuscarry.unt.edu. It's up and running. It's got information about the law. It's got the 23-member task force committee there. Our names and our affiliations are there. It has frequently asked questions, so things we have heard, we're just now filling out FAQs, and we'll keep expanding those as we hear things in the, in the town halls so that we can answer them on the website. It has, how do you continue besides today to voice your opinion? We have a share your thoughts form. So if you go to the website, one of the, one of the buttons is share your thoughts. It's a web form that comes to the committee, so all 23 members of the committee will have access to that. And then we also have an email address, so campuscarry@unt.edu. That again, goes to all 23 members of the committee have access to those responses. We're going to then take all of that and all that transpires in each one of these town halls, and then we're going to start drafting the, the campus carry policy here late October and into November. You may, one, we're obviously videoing, videotaping this, so it's available on the website. All of them will be available on the website. But also, we're doing it not only to allow anybody to see it, but we're also doing it so that the members of the task force that are not here can view your thoughts, but we're also doing it so that we can take notes off of it, because I don't want to be up here taking notes while you're talking, et cetera. So we will review them to take notes off of it so we make sure that we get, capture everyone's thoughts and opinions. Thanks for listening to me. It's now y'all's. The, the floor is open. All this belongs to you now. We're here to answer any questions, hear any comments you have, if there's areas you think should be gun-free zones, et cetera. It is open for discussion. Oh, and by the way, he, this is, this is Don Aska. He's going to be, do we need a second one? Oh, okay. We're going to be wrangling the microphones around because we have to be able to pick it up onto the videotape. So.
Hi. Okay. So these, what we're calling gun-free zones, are they dependent on physical location of the building, or can they change depending on what is going on in that building? For instance, you said sporting events, so would the entire Coliseum be considered a gun-free zone, or would it only be while that sporting event was taking place?
It is currently, right now, the way that the law is written, it's basically while that event is going on is when it's a gun-free zone. But I'll take it a little bit broader than that, maybe to, to expand the answer to your question to give you some more idea, is that we will have places on campus that will be stagnant gun-free zones. They will be gun-free zones 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We have also asked the Office of General Counsel, because they're helping draft the policy, you know, our, our legal people, to, basically, we have hundreds of events on this campus. And so we have asked for a procedure to be put in the policy for that special events can be deemed gun-free zones for that three hours, whatever it happens to be. So we want both. We want the ability to say this entire space is always gun-free, and then due to the nature of this event, this is gun-free from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And we want a process or a procedure, a committee to review it, et cetera, and we want that in place so it can be more a living document rather than a stagnant one.
Okay. Got it. Thanks.
Yep. No, not yet.
It would be helpful to have access to this PowerPoint to share with our staff. Is that on the website?
Sure is.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Oh, here we go. Playing devil's advocate.
There you are.
If there was a location, let's say Yell Like Hell, or which is a big campus event that just recently happened during homecoming, where it's deemed a location where you cannot carry a concealed handgun. And if, for example, there was somebody, like an active shooter, who went to a large location like that, where they knew there were, there were going to be a lot of students, how do we make sure that our students are safe if that is a gun-free zone for those with CHO?
I'm assuming the Police Department's present at these events or nearby in these major events. You want to take that?
Yeah, some, some of the high-risk events, we already put up metal detectors and we use wanding when attendees come to those to make sure that no one has a weapon, knife, handgun, or anything at those events. Other events, kind of like it exists today, you know, there's not going to be metal detectors on this building, or there won't be at the Coliseum unless there's, like I said, a specific event that's really high-risk or something along that nature.
I was going to ask, like, on a daily basis, on those buildings that are deemed to be gun-free zones, are they going to have metal detectors or wand, or people just be able to walk in the buildings and if they just forget, they just forget? Or, you know, are they going to have, like, areas too as well where they'll be able to store these guns, or would they have to actually go back to their vehicles and put up their guns?
We, it's come up in other ones. We, and, and the, the answer is we don't have an answer because we're really getting feedback from the campus community. You know, I've heard in others about are we going to have metal detectors? I think that would be in, in very selective locations, as Chief Reynolds said, maybe some high-risk locations there would be, but not just in a, in a building that happens to be deemed gun-free. So I would say probably very unlikely that there would be metal detectors like you would have to go through, like as if you were going into the courthouse. So that would be the first thing. The second one is, is an issue that we're grappling with, with is what do we do with people that have handguns on them and then are going to go into a gun-free zone? And we've heard that not only from the students, but from the staff, especially staff that are mobile throughout the day. You know, we've heard from facilities, we've heard from janitorial staff that, you know, they're moving throughout several buildings a day. How are we going to address that? The answer is, we know it's an issue and we're taking it under consideration, but we don't have an answer as of yet.
Just wanted to make a comment. Your presentation's already made this pretty clear, but I'd like to reinforce that the group of citizens that this law is effective for are quite simply not the ones to be worried about. As you've said in your presentation, they're extremely law-abiding. Also, I'd like to say that gun-free zones only serve to disarm those individuals that are going to abide by the law of the land. It's irresponsible for us to include license holders in the same light as those criminals who choose to ignore the values and laws of our state. People who are intent on doing harm, robbing others, or committing other crimes have already dismissed the laws of our state and are already engaging in crimes much more severe than walking past a sign with a gun. They will simply ignore local regulations put in place by the administration. The result is armed criminals and disarmed victims. Licensed law-abiding citizens should not be disarmed because of unfounded fear of concealed weapons being carried by those lawful citizens. Another thing that I've heard a lot in these town hall meetings is a lot of people afraid of vigilanteism and these kinds of things. I'd like to say that I am not a vigilante. I am not a cop. I'm not Rambo. I'm not John Wayne. I'm a, I'm a CHO holder so that I can defend myself, my loved ones, and if needed, anyone around me in the event of an active shooter or something like that. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm next. My question is, we have minors on our campus frequently. Are, is there going to be some kind of requirements or regulations in the policy and what's going to happen with those who are CHO holders around our minors?
We, we've identified minors that are here all the time, and, and those have been put on the list of, of places to consider for gun-free zones. So Child Development Lab and then McConnell Hall, because that is where the TAM students live and they're minors. There have been questions about how are we going to deal with summer camps? And it's kind of, unfortunately, I, I have to answer like I answered yours, which we know it's an issue. We don't have an answer of how we're going to deal with, with minors on campus. I think it fits into kind of with the original comment, which was, we're going to have to have some kind of temporary process in place that maybe those, some of those summer camps are overnight camps, so maybe the dormitories in which they reside are becoming gun-free zones. We're just going to have to grapple with it. We can't, we can't make it where, you know, anywhere a minor is, you can't carry a gun because then we're going to have to, like, carry around the gun-free zone sign everywhere because they're, they're everywhere. I mean, the high school kids come onto campus to do tours, they're everywhere. And so we're going to have to be strategic in, in how we do that and do the best job we can to, to, to keep the minors in a safe environment. Yes, ma'am?
What are the circumstances when someone who is carrying a concealed handgun can brandish their weapon? Like, if they feel threatened, if someone pulls a weapon out on them, if they see an active shooter, like, when can one use CHO? Can they act in a situation before police arrive? That would be very helpful to know.
It is when, and I'll, I'll turn to you to make sure that I, I've said it right, but it is at any point in which they feel that they are under threat of, of serious bodily injury or death from themselves personally or someone around them, then they are allowed by law to use their weapon. Is that correct?
And as, as the law, law enforcement agency, you know, anytime we have an issue where a concealed handgun license holder displays their weapon, we'll look at all of those to make sure it complies with the law or it doesn't comply with the law.
Is this law exclusive to higher ed, or is it K through 12? And the reason I ask is because we have many programs that we sponsor that are not on our campus. So is there anything that is going to be in the policy that we're going to have to abide by if it's not on our campus?
So campus carry is not going to be allowed on K through 12 campuses. And from what we understand from, from the legal side of things, campus carry basically applies to university-owned property or rented, I mean, if we're renting it, but university-owned property. So I'm not, I don't know if you're thinking of, of like student teachers going to a school or something like that. That's, that's not applicable.
More, I guess, code of conduct type of thing? If, if we're out on, let's say, SMU or we're at a YMCA or something, conducting a UNT program, is there's going to be some type of code of conduct that employees are still going to have to follow?
That, yeah, that's about the physical property and not the group that's traveling somewhere.
Yep. So it goes back to university-owned or rented property is where this law will apply. So it doesn't travel with you. Yes?
So this is just an out of curiosity question, because I didn't realize that there are some events that we do wanding or we have metal detectors. Since we are not going to be able to, I guess it said the law was restricting us to have CHO holders self-identify, is that going to mean that at these events, we're not going to be able to have those things anymore because a CHO holder would have to say, I'm allowed to make the metal detector go off?
Well, CHO holder has to identify to a police officer that requests their identification. So if we have an event like that where we're wanding or we have metal detectors, we're going to be there anyway. So the sign would be posted, but we're not, we won't let anyone inside that area that has a weapon that's not a police officer.
So in that situation, we would be making them self-identify just because the nature...
Well, they can choose to walk away when they see the sign and go back to their car and put their weapon up. They don't have to, so.
And they, and they do have to self-identify to the police, and they can voluntarily self-identify as this gentleman already has.
Thank you.
I am not very knowledgeable about CHO, so I'm just going to put that out there right now. If there is a faculty or staff member that has a CHO license, does that mean that the handgun has to be on their person at all times? Or does, if it's not on their person, can it be stored in their desk? And does that desk have to be locked? Or what are the requirements if the handgun is not on their person at the time?
The law says on or about their person. Do we have a, an interpretation of what that is, or?
It has to be concealed. So no one should be able to recognize that they have a concealed weapon. So they can leave it in their vehicle if they're going into a location, but the question came up the other, one of the sessions about whether or not they could lock it in their desk. So we have some concerns about the storage of it, and that's part of the policy that we have to work through with storage.
Because, I mean, and the reason is, is because then it, then, and it, and it says in the thing, CHO holders, part of the requirements is, is you have to be knowledgeable enough for the secure storage of it. So, I mean, you know, when I... So, I mean, you know, when I run down the hallway, my office is still open. I don't close the door behind me. And so I would argue, I'm not a CHL holder, but I would argue I shouldn't put that in my desk drawer, because then if somebody walks in, they have access to it, because I haven't secured it. Yeah.
So there will be policies, sorry, there will be policies about if you are a CHL holder and you have it, that it would not be allowed in an open desk-type situation?
Yeah, so where it needs to be secured. Yes.
Have you guys identified buildings specific besides, like, where minors are yet? Or if you do a gun-free zone, does it have to be the whole building, or can you designate classrooms, or how does that work?
We have not identified specific areas, because we want this to be a consultative process, so we want to hear from everybody before we specifically identify those areas and develop the criteria for how we're going to select them. I will say this, we, one, we need to be strategic about them, because they can't be so broad that they nullify the intent of the law. And the examples I used are examples that we have heard in other sessions, because this is now our fourth town hall meeting. But it does not have to be an entire building. It can be a portion of a building, or it can be an office within a building, et cetera. So a couple of examples, we've heard that we should consider, I believe it is the third floor of Chestnut Hall, because that is where psychological services and counseling is provided to students and perhaps faculty and staff as well. So that floor should be, and maybe not the entire building. We've also heard about particular labs on campus that have flammable chemicals or whatever inside them, so maybe it will become kind of like an office, I mean, it's a lab, but just a space within a building. Again, we have to have the effective notice up, but it does not have to be a building. And we have not decided on what all those areas are, because we want to hear everybody's input. We're basically gathering a list of potential areas to consider. Yes.
Could you talk a little bit about what sort of restrictions the committee is currently considering regarding residence halls?
Y'all want to talk about residence halls? I mean, I could, before we start talking about residence halls, let me just tell you kind of what other states have done, and then maybe they'll piggyback off. Just sit back down. I mean, it's because we, you know, we are looking for what others, what others have done. This is all new in Texas. So here's kind of the gamut of what other universities have done in states that have had it. One, they put a CHL holder in a single occupancy room. There's a self-identify issue with that, though, and we're asking our Office of General Counsel, if we're housing-only, can we require them to self-identify so we can put them in a single occupancy room, if that's what we decide to do? I'm not saying that's what we're doing. That's what some states do. Some states require, they allow them to live in whatever, dual occupancy or single occupancy or whatever, but as soon as they are in their dormitory, they have to lock that weapon in a hotel safe, for lack of a better term, and it has to stay in that hotel safe. So they can't have it in their desk drawer, they can't lay it on their desk and go down to the bathroom, they can't do that. That it's by rule, it has to maintain, has to be inside that hotel safe anytime they're in the dorm building. The third option that some states have adopted is a centralized storage location. It's usually at the police department, so they're not allowed in the dorms at all, and you have to go and check it into the police department and then check it out of the police department, but you can't have it in your dorm at all. So that's kind of how others have done it, and what are we looking at, or what are we doing?
I think you've answered it all. We don't know the answer to the question. We're consulting with Office of General Counsel to see what we can ask, what we can't ask. And as soon as we know that, then our policies will follow suit. So likely in the realm of one of those three options, I would imagine, or a hybrid if need be.
So pretty much I answered the question.
You did.
Pretty much, yeah.
He's smart.
Well, it got very quiet. When class gets quiet, that tells me that there are no more questions. Okay, so just a couple of final comments. You know, if, if like me, strokes of genius hit you at two o'clock in the morning, okay, remember, we got our web form, all right? So fill it out, give us your thoughts. Send us an email through campuscarry@unt.edu. So keep, as things come to you, keep sending them to us, and we will keep looking at them and keep exploring them. The second thing is, is that we will, we want this, like we are doing today, we want this to be as transparent as possible. And so we will be providing updates on our campuscarry.unt.edu website of the work of the committee, and you can get updates there as we proceed along. Other than that, thank you for your time, and thanks for coming out. I hope you have a great Monday. It's Monday. Great Monday. All right. Thank you.
I got sent it.
I'll go back.
Very sad.